Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Hole for October 28th. If the Clerk could please read the role.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Garza.
Councilmember Garza has an excused absence. He is out of town on business, so with that, we have the minutes of October 14th. And Councilmember, Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the minutes of October 14th, 2019.
All right, we have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. This is an opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to come to the podium and make public comment, this is your opportunity to do so. Is there anyone for public comment? Mary, are you?
No, I'm just finding a seat.
You're just trying to find a seat, okay. No one else? All right, with that, we are going to move into our presentations. Our first presentation that we have this evening is the Ingham County Fair Director. And if you could come up to the table, up here. Yes, right at the table there, ma'am. And, um, on the, there's a microphone there, but you need to push the button to make sure the green light is shining. Okay? And it is our understanding you are the new Director of the Ingham County Fair, and we have some of the representatives in the audience who are Ingham County Commissioners, Fair Commissioners, and so they had asked that we bring you and let you talk a little bit about the fair and your ideas of things that you'd like to see happening there, and so we'd like to turn the floor over to you if you would introduce yourselves to council.
Hi, my name is Lindsay McKeever.
I'm gonna have you pull that mic a little bit closer to you. There you go.
Hi, my name's Lindsay McKeever. I am new to Michigan, I'm here from New York State, so I just got here a couple months ago. Thank you for having me here this evening and welcoming me to Lansing. I'm very excited to be here with the Ingham County Fair and have lots of ideas on, you know, making sure the fair is inclusive for everyone and family-friendly entertainment to just have the best week of summer at the fair.
And did you want to explain what some of the ideas that you're thinking about, or are you waiting for Board approval on some of those?
Yeah, I think we're, everything's on the table for next year, and we're just really excited to, I'm really excited to have this opportunity, and we're like 287 days away from next year's fair, if I'm counting. So, yeah.
Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. Lindsay, thank you for being here. I have the distinct pleasure of knowing Joy really well, and she has actually excited me about the fair, and she comes to our meetings and she tells us about what's going on, and I am at her urging this year, I actually went to the fair after many, many years, and it's wonderful. And my big concern is, which she actually brought to my attention, is how do we market this to the urban core, so that those of us that live in the urban core are aware of the fair and what it has to offer us, and because it's great for the children, it was great for me, and even get some more participation maybe from, I know we have 4-H groups in the city, how do we get more participation from them and really include those of us that live in the urban area?
Yeah, that's really important for me. I'm definitely gonna be taking steps to do some community outreach to meet the different groups that live here and are active in the community, and, you know, bring events to the fair that are attractive to everyone and not just, you know, the same type of events that we've had over and over. And also, I'm really interested in the competitive exhibits and the open class, so separate from 4-H that anyone can enter their items into, and that is also going to increase participation into the fair.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you for coming and moving to Lansing or the mid-Michigan area. I went to the county fair this year, had a great time with my family, met up with another fam, young family, so I have a three-year-old daughter, a one-year-old son, and my father came with us. It was a great time. The only thing that kind of turned me off is, who saw the tractor pull? Did you see all that black smoke just going up in the air every time they did it? You know, and as a recently, you know, aware person, it was just a little bit, you know, put off that way. Other than that, we had a great time.
Just don't go on tractor pull night, is that it? Are there other Councilmember comments? I think the only thing that I'd like to add is, is I know that marketing is extremely important and working with the Convention Bureau to make sure that that information is there. I think also we have some strong neighborhood groups in the community, if we could get information early enough out to encourage them to participate, those are all things that would be helpful. Also, City TV, which is something that does PSA announcements and things like that, that's another good avenue for you, because I think, you know, if you grew up here in this community, you might know about the fair. If you haven't, you hear about it sometimes just as it's finishing from somebody, and you never make the opportunity to get there, and those might be some additional ways to attract people to come to the fair. And you're more than welcome, you or any of your Board or Commission members are more than welcome before the fair starts to come down and make announcements at council to remind the viewing public that the fair is going to be coming on, so.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. We want to thank you very much for coming this evening and for your Board members as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Friends of the Cemetery. Loretta? I do want to preface this presentation for the public ahead of time. The determination of the facilities and how they are utilized throughout the city is part of the role of the Mayor, and, but we have been asked by a number of people to at least have an opportunity for people to be able to have more than three minutes to explain some of the concerns that they have for those that utilize the cemetery and would like to have that opportunity. So we are doing this forum at this time to allow that, but again, council does not have a decision in this, this is the Mayor's decision. So with that, Loretta?
Hi, I'm Loretta Stanaway, and I'm President of the non-profit Friends of Lansing Historic Cemeteries. We've been in existence since 2007, and our mission is to protect and promote and prosper the three city-owned cemeteries, and that includes the office on Mount Hope Avenue, which is being discussed as being closed and relocated into Foster Community Center. That office has been there 60 years or more, and in our assessment, this is a bad idea for many reasons, foremost of which is you cannot treat grieving people the same way you treat someone returning a library book or paying for a Zumba class. Secondly, the disability issues at the Foster Community Center are serious. You, as an administration, would be coming across as heartless and insensitive and uncaring if you refuse to recognize that people coming to arrange burial services and buy grave sites and columbarium sites deserve to be treated deferentially and with respect for their emotions, and that they require privacy while they are vulnerable and fragile in their time of grief. You are dealing with people in their most perilous and sensitive state versus dealing with day-to-day business transactions, these are two very different things. The Foster Community Center is functionally inaccessible to many handicapped or disabled persons, particularly if they use a motorized wheelchair. The elevator breaks down often and is not reliable in any way. Specifics on this topic will follow in the bullet points. The administration, in our view, has handled this poorly, appearing to attempt to sneak this into effect with minimal notice to the funeral homes, monument companies, and florists that would also be affected, and even less notice to the public. The City Council was not informed prior to us making it public. The Friends of Lansing Historic Cemeteries was not informed. If a citizen didn't happen to go to the cemetery office during the time the notice was on the door, they would not have known. The stated reason of staffing issues will actually be aggravated by this move, since the cemetery office staff person, who was originally not planning to retire for one to two more years, from what she had told me earlier, is now considering putting in her resignation papers. It will not be a cost-saving move. Actually, it could cost the city if people find it easier to go elsewhere to conduct business. And you have $4 million in new Parks and Rec money from the sales of the two golf courses. You have the Fratcher Memorial Garden income and Evergreen Section G income, so funding shouldn't be a problem. You cannot solve staffing issues on the backs of the grieving public. It takes a certain personality and demeanor and skill set to do this job. It is not an interchangeable position. Just because someone can answer a phone and enter data doesn't mean they can appropriately deal with grieving persons. It is not the public's job to make it easier for you to serve them, it's your job to make it easy to serve the public. The public is universally against this move. Over 8,000 people have viewed the Friends Facebook posts on this, and there have been 338 emoticons, all against the move, 227 comments, 226 against the move, and 108 shares to other pages where we can't track what the responses have been. All against this move. A petition that was taken only to two community events with about a total of 50 persons in attendance has 47 signatures against this move. And nothing has been said at all about what would be done with the cemetery office if it is vacated. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jeff Davis from Greater Lansing Monument, and he will talk about what kind of impact this would have on monument companies. Thank you, Jeff.
Hi, my name is Jeff Davis. I own Greater Lansing Monuments. My take on this, and I only learned this through Loretta, and that was just a couple of weeks ago. We, on a weekly basis, visit the office two to three times. I understand that one of the options or reasons that the office is being shifted is convenience. Because the Secretary is retiring, the people who would temporarily sit in until a permanent secretary or person were assigned to that office would be inconvenienced for having to drive to the cemetery office from where they work, three miles away. Instead of my driving three minutes, I'm going to drive 10 minutes, coming and going. I will, I will see many more stoplights involved than an individual will add two and a half to three miles to their trek into work. I, like Loretta, identify that office as being extremely important, pardon me, as to the elderly, a grieving widow, or widower, needing to arrange for burial plots or internment, now wonders where they're going to go. And I know that everyone here knows that that office is shifting to the Parks and Recreation Department. I've not seen it. I don't live in Lansing, so this is not my back, my back door. I would have to go find it. I would assume some of the people needing their services will have to do the same. If they don't have graves at the time, then the person who is inconvenienced or not inconvenienced for not having to drive that three miles is going to have to drive and take that customer to the cemetery, walk them around, go back to the office, and make a sale for the graves or for internment. I don't see how it's, once the office is closed or set into a different service, it'll never be reopened for any kind of public access. I was told, I've been in this business for 20 years, I was told when I came that you can, because we service hundreds of cemeteries throughout Michigan, you can identify what a city or a township or a community thinks of its people, the way they treat their dead. So, I think that this is a wrong move. I think it's unnecessary, there's an office directly across from a cemetery. Seems silly, however, that's my, that's my two cents.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. I'll go through the bullet points now that we have listed as.
Do you want to move the mic back to you, Loretta? Thank you.
The bullet points listed under current location, it's convenient, it has accessible bathrooms, it's realistically accessible to the handicapped or disabled, there's a short walk from the parking spot to a short ramp to a wide door. There is sufficient space for a motorized wheelchair and sufficient space inside for families to gather, because often it's not just one or two persons that come, it's an entire family. It provides oversight to activities going on in the cemeteries, especially for Mount Hope, which increases the safety of the public and the workers. If someone gets injured, it's much simpler to go across the street and get help than to drive three miles away. It keeps an eye on inappropriate conduct, we know that there are problems at times in any of the three cemeteries with things like homeless, or drugs, or alcohol, or prostitution, you name it, these kinds of things can be watched more closely from that location. If nature conditions change, if a tree comes down in a windstorm, it's much more easy for that to be spotted from across the street and from three miles away. Somebody is available in case of an emergency within the cemetery. Woman falls and breaks her ankle, or twists her leg, or whatever, you know, it's much simpler to get help from across the street. It serves the public seeking grave site locations and genealogical information, which is a service that should be provided. Find a Grave, for example, does research which helps the public and the staff by making information they locate available to everyone to reduce the times that other people might have to come in and get that same information. It's easy access for the funeral homes and florists and monument companies, and they do use that facility multiple times a week. The florists come to find out where a grave is when they have to deliver funeral arrangements or remembrance arrangements. The monument companies Jeff has spoken to, the funeral homes stop in there to drop off payments after a service has been held. It protects the irreplaceable historical records from loss to theft or desecration because they are under observation. If someone comes in to use the card files, Amy's there watching what they do with those files. These archived materials need to be supervised so that people don't steal items, use pens, or eat or drink around them, and they must be stored in a cool and dry space, no attics or basements. They need to be properly secured against unauthorized access, it is still a matter of privacy, and those records are private until the person that wants to release the information gives authority to do so. People have volunteered to help digitize the records and were told they could not because it was a union job, yet I now hear that interns are at work somewhat on digitizing those records. People have volunteered to staff the office in its current location, if it does, if there is a decision that it must be moved, they want to volunteer to staff it there to keep it there. People have offered to be trained to work at the current location. The columbarium wall at Mount Hope generates $112,500 in sales for each wall, and that doesn't include opening-closing charges or other charges. Section G and Evergreen generates another $75,000 or more per year. All other local cemeteries have offices on-site, and the travel back and forth is a waste of time and money for both the citizens and the staff. Some people also have difficulty reading a map, so going up to the Foster and being given a map and said, "Here, go find your grave," isn't gonna work for them because they can't follow the map. Proposed Foster Community Center location is two-plus miles away in heavy traffic, parking lot is often full. There are three handicap access spots, but they are always usually already occupied. It's a 30-foot walk to the ramp, then the ramp is long and exposed to weather. There's double-entry doors, which are not wide enough for a motorized wheelchair, and often those doors are locked, so someone would have to wait for someone to come and unlock them. It's a long hike to the elevator. The elevator barely accommodates one standard wheelchair and one person, there is no room for a service animal, other people, or a motorized wheelchair. The elevator often breaks down. Once you get to the second floor, it's another hike to the hallway that leads then into Parks and Rec's offices, a short hallway into the offices, and both bathrooms on that floor are right near there, but they're both inaccessible, they have a marble lip that's about three inches high, which makes them impassable. The small cubicle proposed for the use of the office secretary is not large enough for more than two people, one if the other person is in a wheelchair. There is no privacy. You cannot conduct this kind of business while somebody in the next cubicle over is talking about running out space in Francis Park for a picnic. There is a lot of noise in that building, and there's a lot of confusion, so someone walking in to go up to this office area to conduct this kind of business while they're in their emotional state would have to be walking past kids running in the hallway, a basketball court, bouncing balls off the walls, you name it. The public now can choose not to go to events at the community center if they have disability limitations, but if they need to buy a grave or plan a service, they would not be able to choose not to go there unless they took their business elsewhere, which entirely is possible. For the users of Spectrum and Ready Ride and the door-to-door CADA services, this would be very problematic because it would require multiple times for pickups and drop-offs if they were having to go back and forth from the community center to the cemetery and then back to the community center, and those timings and schedulings are difficult enough as it is. They aren't sure where they would put the card files, the maps, other records, the flags, there's no certainty yet as to where those would be located, or how they would maintain this, the safety of those historical records. The conference room that Brett suggested might be a fallback in case of more than two people being there at one time, is not always available. And parking for the hearse, when they stop from the funeral homes to drop off a payment for a service that's just occurred, would be difficult, and I can't imagine the response some of the public might have when they pull into the parking lot and see a hearse sitting there. It adds to traffic and parking problems for the residents of the Foster Community Centers nearby residential streets. They already have to deal with times when the lot's full and the parking overflows onto their residential streets and they can't get parking in front of their own homes. The public has complained of no response from City Council persons, some City Council persons, the Mayor, and the Parks Director. Carol Wood, Jody Washington, Jeremy Garza, and Peter Spatafor have answered emails or on Facebook postings. To my knowledge, the others have not. There are some quotes at the bottom here that, if you think that there's time, Carol, I'll read, if not, we could skip those.
Since we've got them, we'll read those ourselves, thank you.
Okay. So this concludes our presentation. We are aware of the lack of authority that the council has to act on this, but we are also aware that we are requesting that the Mayor and his administration reconsider this and give it some thoughtful reconsideration, perhaps change their minds, or at the very, very, very least, find a different location on the first floor of Foster Community that would be more accessible. And we encourage the council to support that effort by a resolution or a statement or whatever you might feel comfortable doing. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the, yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. It would be nice if the Mayor's Office just like put in a blurb or two, or like a little information on why it is a move. I imagine it's financial, but Loretta makes a lot of good points, so I don't know if there's anything, I mean, I understand financial, but if there's anything to add or later, it would just be nice to hear it.
Could I respond?
I think the question is to the administration, but Councilmember Jackson, you might not have seen it, the Mayor did send us all an email explaining his rationale for why he was changing this. Samantha, did you want to add anything to that?
Sure, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well, but you know, this is certainly more of an efficiency move. One of the concerns as well is that if the person, there's one person who staffs the cemetery office, if that person is off for the day, if that person's at a meeting, the office is closed currently, and there's no one there that is there for backup, and so, or if they're helping someone else, and so if we're at Foster, we certainly have a more efficient process to help people, there are other staff people. If, for example, right now someone calls and that person again is out or helping someone, the call will not be answered at Foster, there's a better chance of there being staffed backup for those things. And so we feel like this is a better operational use of that person's time and being able to help people when they need it, but also be able to work on other things as well as needed.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What's gonna, do we know what's gonna happen with the office, the current structure that's there?
I don't know, offhand.
We can't hear.
I don't know.
I asked, I asked, I'm sorry, I asked if we knew what was going to happen with the current structure that's on, that's there right now. Would it be, is property gonna be sold, is it gonna be shut down? So that's what I was asking.
I'll find out.
Well, just to be, that is part of the cemetery, so to be sold in the charter, it would have to go before the voters to be allowed to be sold. Okay. Yes, Loretta?
First off, both the Mayor and Brett Koschinski, Director of Parks and Rec, have told me that this is not being viewed as a money-saving effort, it is more of a staffing issue. By the time you consider what little they would save on utilities and so forth, they'll be spending on traveling back and forth and transportation for related issues, so it's not being viewed as a money saver at all. And Jeff, would you like to speak to the closing of the office issue?
It was indicated that when Amy, or the gal who runs it now, is out or off for the day, that it's closed, and that's not true. There are two, two women in the Parks and Rec office that rotate, and I've, I've never gotten or not gotten through to the office whether the Secretary is there or not and someone else is sitting there. It's always manned.
Thank you. Council, Vice President Spatafor.
To that point, it's my understanding that there are three Parks and Rec Department officials who are trained in cemetery operations, they do not work out of that office, they work out of Foster, there is one or two that work out of the cemetery office. The idea behind this efficiency move is that there will be more folks trained in cemetery operations, so that service will be more robust for folks that do visit Foster. Maybe Foster's not the right spot, but I certainly don't think that it's your position to contradict the administration's position on who is and who is not trained to operate the cemetery office. I wouldn't do that to anybody at a three-minute podium session, but you've come to plead a case here, this is a. This is an administrative decision, but the efficiencies we look for in trying to deliver services better to government is what the mayor has been charged with and a number of folks around this table, and I'm not speaking for anybody. Please do not take that to my colleagues. But it is not uncommon in municipal cemetery systems to go to the central government agency for those services, Delta Township. We had this conversation with the Delta Township clerk when we buried my grandparents. We found a conference room to have the conversation, but it's not uncommon to have these types of offices in a centrally-located position, five or six miles from that cemetery in question. Now, I will say, it was, it was nice to have an office like that right there, near your business, I might add, but it is something that as we look to trim the fluff out of our budget and make a more efficient use of the taxpayer dollar, that we have to keep everything on the table. And like I, in the email I responded back, said it's an administrative decision, and I'll sit on my hands on it, but I do think that we are, we're having a conversation about something that it's good that we're talking about it, but I do think that a lot of the facts point toward this being a more efficient use of city resources to deliver a service that, yes, is very sensitive and very emotional for folks, and I appreciate that. And the mayor has gone on record in several emails and in conversations to us and council and to you as well, Loretta, that they're willing to look at ways to accommodate some of your concerns, but I don't think it's 100% one-way or no-way at all.
Are there any other questions? Any final comments?
Colleen and Yvette at the Summit, at the Parks and Rec office are both trained to cover and do cover routinely for Amy, so there are three people, including Amy, trained to do that job, and they do rotate in and out as necessary when she's away on vacation or out sick or whatever. And again, I've never encountered a time when the office wasn't staffed unless the person that was staffing it was out in the cemetery servicing a client. And it's, it's been there sixty-plus years. I know that's not necessarily a reason to leave it there, but it served a very good purpose, and again, I will just stress that one of the overwhelming issues that we are dealing with is that you do not treat in any way, shape, or form someone who is dealing with these losses and grief in the same day-to-day business transaction manner that you treat somebody signing up for a Zumba class. It's not that simple.
Thank you. Public, we've already had public comment, if, so this is not the appropriate time for it. So with that, we want to thank you, and we will move on in our agenda. And next, we have Not Without Us Finding, so we're ready for you.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I appreciate your time today. My name is Annie Eraski. I'm from the Michigan Department of Civil Rights. I'm the Director of the Division on Deaf, Deaf Blind, and Hard of Hearing, and here today, I'm, I'm going to be presenting about, well, I actually presented to the council a while ago when we were launching the survey. But I'm excited to report that we have some data and the results in. Please note, I could talk all night about this data. It's very comprehensive, but I wanted to pick out some of the main data points and what I feel like would be relevant to the council. I'm happy to schedule a one-on-one session if you would like something more in-depth. Also, you should have accounts, a copy of my PowerPoint presentation.
Yes, we do, thank you.
And for anybody else who's interested, we have more copies in the back on the table. So first, the intention of the survey was to research and kind of get an estimate, a ballpark number of the residents in Michigan who are deaf, deaf-blind, and hard of hearing. And then we also wanted to do a needs assessment on what their preferences and experiences were on assessing services during their life. So first, we identified the hearing loss types of individuals in the state and whether that hearing loss happened at birth, or if it was progressive or latent in life. The needs assessment really, we tried to determine education, employment, healthcare, accessibility to services, housing, transportation, and so forth. Our research team, we contracted with PSC, it's Public Service, or Public Sector Consultants, and Madonna University. They have a sign language studies program there. And the goal of our initiative was to collect information regarding our community and also to understand their needs, their barriers, what opportunities they have, and really try to strive for more funding and development and policy and program services for our state. And of course, we wanted to save all of our information, or share all of our information with all of the pertinent parties. The project team, before we were announcing the results, we took a lot of time to really aggregate that data and establish who our deaf, deaf-blind and hard-of-hearing constituents in the state are. We developed a survey. We really spent a lot of time on formatting the questions and how would we dispense the survey and get that out to individuals in the state and the members who would be involved. We had eight members on a steering team, what they're experiencing, their input, their perspectives on the survey questions. It was, I mean, a very valuable team. I included some pictures that we had on the website here. The survey itself, that could be accessed online, and it was available in written English, or you could also select an ASL, American Sign Language version. Each survey question was translated into an American Sign Language video, and you could pick from each answer as well. There was also a, excuse me, a paper and pencil survey that could be mailed in. And we also hosted different community events and town halls with computer access for individuals who didn't have access to online services at home. So we had several ways to access the survey. One of the most important pieces of information, and many times, you know, like we go to legislators or we go to other state agencies, or the governor's office, or here with the city council, and one of the questions we always get is how many deaf, deaf-blind, and hard-of-hearing individuals are there in our state? So what we learned here is that the last time we had a comprehensive assessment on the population, we were really undercounting and very overlooked. So I guess the estimate was about, they're saying it was an underestimation of about forty percent. That's what we thought, but they're saying it's actually seventy percent. So it's nearly double what our initial estimate was. So when we're talking about funding allocation or prioritizing where our community should consider, you know, programming and services, or how many people are in a specific region even, our needs are not even being assessed accurately. Their estimating hard-of-hearing individuals is six thousand, three, or six hundred and thirty-two thousand, sorry, eight hundred and twenty-five, forty-five thousand deaf, and forty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-three deaf, and ten thousand one hundred and sixty-five deaf-blind. So based on the region that you're living in, the percentage is really very drastically, depending on region. And this is a really important finding because often we, you know, we think about when you're developing programming and services or making sure that information is accessible. You know, often we, we base those decisions off of estimate, estimates that we have for each region, so if we're off by seventy-four percent, obviously, we're overlooking some. So the needs assessment was a separate portion from the estimated census, and for that needs assessment, we asked, we asked a huge array of questions. And the questions were triggered on the age of the individual who was taking the survey at the time and when their hearing loss occurred, whether they were born deaf or had a hearing loss later in life. So the questions, I guess, were very strategically dependent on the individual, the individual's We asked demographic questions, communication preferences, employment, education, housing, transportation, healthcare access, and access to services, and what priorities they wanted the state to focus on. So the survey breakdown, we had a good representation of the population based on age, gender, type of hearing loss, and region and demographic information. Nearly thirty percent of hard-of-hearing were sixty-five years old and older, and a third of deaf-blind individuals were under the age of fourteen. The survey respondents who identified as people under of color, or who identified as people of color were significantly underrepresented, so we feel like that is a weak point in the data there. We asked questions about communication preferences. Often, our community has a very diverse set of communication needs and preferences. Some people like to use an interpreter. Some people exclusively use sign language. Some people use speech and read lips or use hearing aids and cochlear implants or rely on captioning and CART services. Deaf-blind interpreters who do tactile interpreting. So we really wanted to see, like really do a deep dive on what the community prefers. There was a large response that said deaf, deaf-blind, or people who are using ASL and bilingual. But one interesting find was that twenty percent of our hard-of-hearing respondents also said that they're comfortable using American Sign Language in addition to written English or whatever preferred method they're also using. People who identified also in various ways of communication tools, so like the key concepts of what works for one individual may not be a good fit for another individual, but having the ability to self-navigate and advocate for your own preferences is important. And we did also identify that some significant barriers. Access to all of the various communication tools was an issue in many regions. A perfect example of that would be when we asked deaf, deaf-blind individuals about interpreter preferences and the availability of interpreters. Do you prefer to have a live interpreter there in person like we have here tonight? Or would you prefer, it's a service called Video Remote Interpreting, where it's similar to, well, it's, it's an off-site, on-laptop access to an interpreter. Seventy-three percent know they want a live interpreter, not the technology, but it also depends on the type of situation. And four percent said they did prefer the technology, and three percent said they didn't, it didn't matter. But that's a very important finding because many service providers who are providing the accommodation are relying on that technology, and they think, oh, cool, Video Remote Interpreting. I don't have to have somebody come in person. It's cheaper, it's more cost-effective, it's easy to use, but the needs of the community and their preferences is to have the live interpreter in person. I also included a chart here based on the barriers in scheduling interpreters. There's a huge difference between reasonable notice or scheduling an interpreter two weeks out or having a less than twenty-four-hour scheduling. Two weeks out, I think you have a good experience. Most individuals said that they had a good experience in that, but less than twenty-four hours is tough. The average response was sixty-five percent of our respondents said that they have a pretty good experience trying to hire an interpreter, and I think that's good. And regarding captioning, it's really important for us. Many of our respondents said that twenty-eight percent feel that live captioning is important. That's public events, but seventy percent said they have a hard time getting availability to captioning services. So that shows us that perhaps we not have enough awareness about captioning and its intention and how important it is and why it's important, especially regarding accessibility. So many members of our community will often maybe have to ask for captioning services or ask, and sometimes the service provider is not understanding even what that service is, and, or they'll say, I'm sorry, it's not in the budget, or we're not required to provide, or we'll put an interpreter in instead. So that means that we've got some more work to do on increasing awareness about the benefits of captioning itself. Access to services is another really important one. I really, our community and the kinds of services they need access to, whether they think or assume that they qualify for it, you know, like including services from government agencies, nonprofit organizations, or any other organizations that they're trying to access within their region. Some of those organizations might provide services or communication tools, or agencies who provide interpreting services or captioning services, deaf-blind interpreters, or any specific income-based programming that they might be qualified for. So just being able to have access, any kind of social services in general, I think is tough. And for our community, the key to using those types of services is just, is it accessible? So that's a very important finding, just making sure that all those are accessible. This one might be hard to see. There's another chart here, but we asked our respondents to list their choices based on government programming, Michigan Rehab Services, that's employment-related, and Medicare, Social Security Disability Insurance, Medicaid, food assistance programs, children and special health care, mental health services, CMH and Community Mental Health, access to the state, Disability Network, or the Center for Independent Living, or BSBP, the Boroughs of Services for the deaf, or for the, for blind persons, I'm sorry. And the range really varied based on whether the individual had an understanding of that they're qualif, like if they qualified for those services. Some say, yes, I could qualify, but I've never used it before. And some say, I've applied, but I was denied services for one reason or another, and some said that they were currently accessing services but don't need it anymore. But the key area that we noticed a huge range on was the part of who's actually accessing the services. And it's, it's really close to what we got from the, the count from state services, but we did notice is that there's, there's a misinformation of people who think that they don't qualify and the reason that they're not using the services. And the reason that they're not doing that is because of the communication barriers. Many programs ask individuals to verify their eligibility, but for many in our community, that system is nearly impossible to navigate. Like, for example, here, some individual services will say, you have to fill out an application form, and that application form is in written English, and it's usually on a website. Maybe English is not the first language of many of the individuals in our state, and there's no translations made in ASL, so that form doesn't have large print or isn't compatible with the screen readers that our deaf-blind folks use. So automatically, that's an immediate barrier, and many in our community will just say, forget it, like, I can't fill out that application because it's not accessible for me. Or maybe they don't understand what the verbiage is in the application, and so there's misinformation filling out that application, and the application then gets denied, or they missed a few things, or there's misunderstandings of that English. And one that we really noticed is sixty-eight percent said they had no access to communication services. So that would mean, let's say, I decide to make an appointment with the service provider, and the service provider says, no, I'm really sorry, we're not responsible for providing you with an interpreter. I can't provide you with CART services. That would be too costly, so you have to bring in like a volunteer or, you know, like a friend. And that's a huge frustrating barrier for the individuals in our community who are trying to access those public services. Seventy-six percent said Seventy-six percent said the agency limits access to services because the agency itself says that we do not have services for the deaf, deaf-blind, and hard-of-hearing community. Our programs do not accommodate your needs. And thirty-seven percent say it's an ongoing struggle, the applications are too difficult, and so they're one, not understanding that form. And then they can't get access to somebody in the building who can help them navigate that form, because there's no access to communication with interpreters, or et cetera. So let's say I'm trying to get help from this program provider. I can give them a call. And I can use the Video Relay Service, which is an interpreter that helps make phone calls on the phone. But if they've never experienced a Video Relay call, I'll tell you what happens. We get hung up on all the time, because they think it's a telemarketer, or some kind of a scam. And so it's constant hang-ups. And that creates another barrier. You know, for a deaf person like myself, if I need help filling out the form, and the only way to access that is by me calling through the interpreting service, and then I get hung up on, that's not effective. And thirty-four percent said, I'm just not sure I qualify for these services, and I don't know how to find that out. Seventeen percent said there were other general issues that they didn't specify. But I feel like this content is very important for us, because when we're discussing looking at customer service, or all of the programming services, you know, comprehensively that the state provides, we need to think, is it accessible? Is it inclusive? Are we thinking of all of the populations who may be impacted by the way this information is presented? Another good example here is like, if there's a form for any kind of service, if you have a form that is translated in Spanish, if you have a form that's available in English, is it in large print? Also, for people who use screen readers, is there a way to check this information if you need additional access? Is there, is there verbiage on the form that tells you how to go about getting help for clarification? Do I have a form that can be converted to Braille? So this is really a way for us to kind of take a step back and really take a hard look at how we present the information for the services that we're providing. And how can we eliminate those barriers? And make the system more navig, like, more user-friendly? Just like any hearing person who can easily go online and fill out a form, or make a phone call, we need to make the process as easy for everyone else, who is deaf, deaf-blind, and hard-of-hearing, too. Everyone should have the same access to services. And then lastly here, we also asked we didn't want to assume what they thought, so we asked them what the priorities that they thought the Division should be. And out of the deaf and deaf-blind individuals, they said they wanted more legislative action to protect their community needs. And to really ensure funding was allocated for their programming. And that kind of aligned with the hard-of-hearing demographic as well. And they wanted to make sure that services that they're qualified for provide accommodations, because people who are service providers, state agencies, government agencies, nonprofits, they just don't understand the communication access and what that means. They don't understand what qualified interpreter means, or what CART services are, or what captioning means. So we really want to educate the public as a whole about communication access and what that means. And the only difference for the hard-of-hearing community was that they wanted advocacy for funding related to health insurance coverage for hearing aids. So those are our key comprehensive goals for right now. And what we're planning on doing next, we will be hosting community conversations. We want to go back out to that same community, visiting all of the regions, and all of the agencies, and members who are, you know, even maybe at the City Council, assessing the survey results. And talking about what the data that we've already collected means, and asking if we've overlooked anything. We really want to take the time to really do a good job of that. And there'll be an access to a viewbook that will be posted on our website with all of the comprehensive data. And every Wednesday, the Division will be posting ASL videos on different survey results. The important part of this is that it was a comprehensive service, or assessment. We hadn't gotten any data in thirty years, so yeah, so, yeah, now the hard work starts. It was a wonderful stepping stone. But now we need to figure out what we're going to do with the data that we have, and building relationships and collaborating, and we would love to work with the City of Lansing, and we're just happy to be here, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those now.
All right, do you have questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. What is an appropriate amount of time for access? I know it probably varies per activity, but for like, the City of Lansing to provide a service, or at least have something, what's appropriate timeline, as far as when the request is made?
And just so you know, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not giving any legal advice here. But it is important the Americans with Disability Act, or the ADA, provides reasonable reasonable notice. And that's by the Appointing Authority. So that would mean that the City of Lansing is determining what reasonable means. So some would say a week is plenty of time. Some say forty-eight hours. But I would say the best solution would be the day that you post that meeting notice on your website, or that you're hosting a meeting, include the verbiage with the flyer that says reasonable accommodations provided. So that says, if I'm an individual and I need an accommodation, or I need auxiliary aids, or services, or any kind of access tool, it'll say, please contact this individual, it'll be right on the flyer, provide a phone number or an email address. And you do your best to do a search based off of the needs. Because reasonable notice varies between a week, or, you know, what if somebody who just found out about the meeting still wants to attend, and they're trying to, you know, make requests in less than twenty-four hours, it's still due diligence. But that term reasonable notice should trigger an interactive process. And that means that the person who's responsible for providing the accommodation should ask the individual, thank you for your request, we'll do our best to make a search for you, and what accommodation best suits your communication needs? So there is probably a little homework for everybody to do, but check your meeting notices, and see if your language is on there. And I guess that'll let us know the amount of time we have to get accommodations made, right?
Councilmember Jackson, was that all of your questions? Are there other questions? I think the question, and I think we asked this to you when you were here before, but have you looked at our website? Have you looked to determine whether there are things that you think that we could improve on, or suggestions that you would like to make to us?
I know that we met, and I think I met with Samantha as well. The mayor's office, we were discussing some issues there, and we were more focused on the captioning, which is great. But if there's anything additional, or if you'd like any consulting services or anything, I'm happy to reach out. Have Samantha get ahold of me.
I would suggest that that might be something to work with the administration that's looking at our website. We often talk about the forms and the things that are on there, the easy access for those. Again, we are doing a lot of employment. Are we making accommodations for people that are taking tests, all of those things? I think that would be something that, to show that we are are aware of some of the needs that are out there, and we are better to have a test facility than right here in your backyard, and working with the Division to try to make some changes. Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. You know, it triggered me, we're thinking about website and public documents, what about our employment applications?
That's what I was referring to as well.
I mean, that's, yeah.
Anything else? We want to thank you for the information that you provided us, and coming back. It's not, it wasn't just the first visit, but the follow-up, and giving us some additional things to chew on, and again, hopefully, we can continue to work together, and we are able to get that your recommendations ingrained in what we do as a city. I think that would be very important to us.
Great, it was my pleasure, thank you so much again.
All right, thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the discussion on the communication from Michigan Department of Treasury, the audit of a minimum assessing requirements review. Okay. We had a letter referred to us to the council that talked about a plan that was submitted, along with the fact that there were some documentations that still had not been supplied to the state. Could you go over this with us, and bring us up to date? Yes. Yep, push the button, so the green light's on.
Oh, how's that better?
That's better.
The October 4th letter was, was about the follow-up to that full audit of procedures that was done in 2018, and is done every five years. They, it's not a matter of not submitting documents, the state got another copy of our entire database, and requested several hard copied documents as well. One of them being several 5076 forms, which is the form that the taxpayer files with us claiming an exemption, a small taxpayer exemption, from personal property taxes. So they found that we were deficient, and the letter was really kind of vague, just said that we were deficient, so I did a lot of digging to find out, you know, what, what was wrong with our procedures in processing those forms. And subsequently found out that we had several statements that were stamped in a day or two after the statutory due date, which is February 20th. However, the law also requires us to accept a postmark for these types of forms as well. So because we didn't save the envelope that the, that the claim came in, proving that the postmark was by February 20th, but it was date stamped in February 21st or 22nd. So it was really a non-issue, really. And I had actually followed up with the letter back to Mr. Gaston at Treasury. Because we did process eleven hundred of those last year, so we weren't really sure what was, was wrong procedurally. But he, when I talked with him, he said he had no concerns, there was no reason for a follow-up. Actually, Nick Tate wanted to sort of put something in the file to close it out, so he reached out to him, and we did get a return email from Mr. Gaston, October 24th, and I'll just read it to you, because it's very, very short. It's addressed to Mr. Tate. I have discussed the issue of the 5076 small business property tax exemption claims with the City Assessor Sharon Freshman. Sharon is extremely, excuse me, extremely knowledgeable of the correct process, and the state is satisfied that statute and state tax commission guidance will be followed. Sharon has corrected all other issues as well, and no further follow-up review is needed for the City of Lansing. If there are any further questions, blah, 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 blah. So as far as the state is concerned, it's a closed case, and we'll see them again in 2023.
So the procedure that you will follow in the future, are you stap, are you stapling the envelope to the form, so that you will have that?
This will be the direction for staff, yes. That, they had been saving the envelopes when it came in late, to prove that, you know, it did come in late, but they didn't, we just didn't think to save the postmark envelope that was by the 20th, even though the statement was stamped in on the 21st.
Okay, all right.
But we'll correct that by attaching the envelopes.
Are there any questions on that? Seeing none, we want to thank you very mu, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Jackson.
Does this have to do with the major corrective action plan from the state? I just see that, I read the title, and it says a corrective action plan was submitted. Is this, is this follow-up from that? This from my information?
No.
No? Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Vice President Spatafor.
Yes, Madam President, I would move that the committee go into closed session for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreement, as is permissible by the Open Meetings Act, if either negotiating party requests a closed hearing, and the closed hearing is being requested by the city.
And this is for the, Don?
Yeah, this is for CCLP non-supervisory and CCLP supervisory contracts.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley? Councilmember Washington? Councilmember Dunbar? Councilmember Jackson? Councilmember Hussein? Councilmember Wood?
Yes. All right, we are now in recess, going into closed session. Thank you.
Sorry. Could you come down here a minute, please? You walk so much. Some days anyway. When did this cemetery? I learned about it on October eighth, uh, when I happened to go to the office and see the notice on the door. That was how I found out. And the proposed move is, um, I believe it's the seventh that they expect to shut it down, November seventh, and then reopen on November twelfth.
What is it they're thinking? Why?
They say it's because of staffing. The original comments made by Brett and the mayor were that Amy is, they're in the office and they collect, and that Colleen knew that in the foster center are the other two people trained. And that Colleen could retire at any time.
Well, if you know she can retire anytime, train somebody.
Exactly.
I mean, she's not a brainer.
And that Amy could retire at a year, well, that's exactly what I respect, was so trained. And, you know.
Isn't that difficult?
No, and, and then, now that, no, this, now that this has come out, I heard from, um, the cemetery supervisor at KPO that Amy does not want to work at Foster and that is what happens. She's putting in a resignation. So, it will just aggravate their situation.
Well, in actuality, she's not ready to re- she's not ready to, uh, leave. She's gonna leave because they're making it impossible to stay.
Exactly, exactly.
And when you go into, do you know what the parking lot?
Oh, absolutely. I go there once a month for our friends meeting on Thursday, it's the first Thursday of the month. The first Thursday of the month, our friends meet there and.
Mr. Swobbs is married.
It's, it's, um, yeah, it's just virtually inaccessible. Technically, it's accessible, virtually.
At the time they did that, I fought, I fought hard. There is nothing acquisitioning about the rest of the town to foster.
Right.
And don't hear me, it was a building. No, we got a lot of buildings at that point in time. You know that.
Right, yes.
Okay, well, my biggest thing is burying, 'cause I got people buried there.
Hey, Faith?
Yes?
Is this mic live?
Oh, really?
Can you unlive it?
I can turn that particular one down until the meeting gets back in.
Yeah, 'cause my voice carries like. I don't really care. I can say it to all of them 'cause I'm gonna get upset anyway. With the situations we're in and the things we have to take care of. This is so far down the line. Doesn't even wipe out.
I turned it off on the main, so. I turned it down all the way, so just.
Okay, when everybody comes in and start playing Jatty Cathy, would you turn it up then? Thank you.
No, there's just cameras up.
What are you gonna do, move the police station when you got, when you gotta get a chief?
Well, not yet, and I didn't get this into my bullet points, but I should've. Even in the first floor, technically accessible bathrooms, that building was designed for school children. Bathroom stalls are so small. I'm not huge, but I'm not tiny either. I barely fit in a stall.
I drop my tips. I'm not kidding. I, I have a lot of teachers.
Yeah, there's, there's, no way, uh, the wheelchair can get through there typically supposedly. There's a hidden gas stall at the back end, but the narrow path to get to it is so narrow.
Go out and among it, move all their places in the south and all that, but when they get the body buried. Yeah, and that's where the area, you're gonna pull out. You don't have enough on your plate. You gotta stop and think about a cemetery. Are you, are you for real?
Really, you know, and ninety-five percent of the clients out that they deal with are severely disabled.
That's a good, of course. I mean, okay, you got your smack up, but no, you have.
Public is only disabled.
If you took the age, and I think when we get into it, we oughta, I, there's some, has to be some way we can take the average age of people that go into that cemetery. In the last, yeah, I mean, but in the last five years, I don't want to make a way back twenty thousand years ago. Just the last five years, what was the age of the people that were buried in that cemetery? Now, you think all their aunts, uncles, moms, dads, and everything else are gonna be, I don't think so. What the hell's the matter with you people?
Well, it boils down to.
Well, they're not gonna leave tonight, today, or tomorrow. Not if you stay there. She would train somebody to take her place.
Right.
That's the way they do it. I know these things. I made it fine. I know this.
There you go. Yeah, yeah.
No, she's not gonna let me talk more than three minutes. I know she's, I got about four things to do. I stayed home and listened to The Voice because on Monday night, I slept there. My daughter said, Mom, you don't work for two hours, 'cause Tuesdays didn't be doing that.
Yeah, well, I knew you'd be in and out a lot, and I thought, look, it's, you should be enjoying your retirement.
This isn't joking. People can't get me. And I know what's going on. I had a friend of mine step seven out. Okay. And I said, what the hell is going on? What are we doing? Is maintaining until Red Robin gets a chair? And she said, Mary, we're trying to hold our country together.
This is the announcement that's on the door. That's what people see if they happen to go there before the train is trached.
Okay, but if you have a body sitting in the morgue or a funeral, you gotta know where you're coming now. You can't wait till November. No, I mean, wasn't this discussed? Opened up a, uh, avenue? But that, that's the wrong word. You know what I'm saying. There was no, there should've been fire. People take these things very personally.
Oh, yes. You should've heard all of it.
This isn't what's happening. Something we're sending to coffee to decide whether we're gonna drive up and make a, uh, white and yellow line down the street.
As well, we're up here having our presentation about during the care board's presentation or during ours, 'cause I couldn't quite tell from the timeline, but this is, this is what I, around Deputy Mayor. She was busy sending a Twitter to Daniel Spann, who's following from the committee of the whole, like, from the committee of the whole. She's sending a miss.
At least have been notified of that. So, from there, but here, I appreciate it.
What did she say? Just that skittle swing?
Yep. So, you know, she's, she's not paying attention to what's being said. She's busy sending Twitter.
Oh, she's, I know she's been, 'cause I'm saying everywhere. I know, I always say over there, 'cause it's, you know. I know, I know everything against her. Like I told her, I said, Sam, I can be the president or I can be a person there. I can ignore you. You might better pick one of two firsts. She says, is that a threat? And I said, no, I just thought.
We can be the price.
Right.
It's a good, you children talk about. Is that that one they had that big to do about, is that what they were, so they could bear?
No, that's a different situation. But she was, this is, this is, please, definitely check this down.
I have a, worn out charter. I'm going to make a note, Deputy Mayor, check it. Probably I should sit over here. I don't have so far to watch.
All right. Do you want to speak? Hello, guys? Uh, it does, uh, what's happening? Uh, can we claim? Yeah, so this is you? Okay, there you go. Yeah.
Yeah, they're just, it's just a tiny bit from Johnson. But, uh, any day, potentially build a, that small. And, but, but now it's even larger. They took trees down and everything, it's, it's not. So, somebody must've bought, they were more than that. Yeah, but it's even, even bigger when I went to church.
Right, yes. Yeah, I'll, so, here you go. Meanwhile, just think of it.
This is over at that, yes. Caesar's Miss Street. But all the cities, both by all councils, it's an opportunity to share. Yes, did just write a plan up here.
Sure, yeah.
I have visions some night. I'm gonna go blind out here all weekend. No, I got it. Thank you so much.
You got, got breaks on that thing?
Yeah, me.
Oh, no.
This is the city council. This is the city council that has to approve the plan and they're having hearings. So, they can hear the public, uh, what's their, uh, more concern. There may be some discussion about the next, uh, but it's more about listening to the public. What's showing is about the same tree, the top. Tree terror, tree terror, has got these different things you're doing. So, how does, then success? Anything on the public? Right.
Well, it's not, it's, it's, uh, no, it's, it's such a.
Yeah, and then come back. During the election, I've. Yes, sir. Yellow is, uh, anything else that we believe? Blue is what's the, uh, series. What is the resolution?
Well, you know, it's, well, and, you know. I can't, I can't.
Or if you wanted, like, one, sure, like. Yeah, you can always say.
No, I would just, and I would get down here. I would keep a monitor. We didn't want to, she didn't want to. She was bad. Yeah, and I say. And then I'd say...
Then you get the speakers, the...
And I'd say, oh, yeah. My mom's there.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Yes.
So...
There's some...
This one, you're important to go to.
They took all his time to...
Yeah, we have a very...
But, there's still, there's still... Yeah, he actually shows us the... By some of them. No, some of them, it's like the...
There's, there's parts that aren't really great, but you know, we... Oh, here. Yeah.
Where, where...
Right, like down...
Oh, yeah.
A lot of things came away. There's some things... Where's your lady? Yeah, he's not on call, he's asleep. She's been on him.
Sorry. Are they worried that that was... You wanna speak, you're right over here.
I mean, I, I don't know, that's... I say I'm...
I'll be there.
And by the view of...
It's a separate story.
If it's... If it's something very current, you can never break down. But, you know, I can...
It's a separate story.
Yeah. This is... So, you do the... Kill them, kill them all the bodies, boy.
I don't... What are you doing?
Oh.
Well, my family's such...
Well...
That's all.
We don't...
So, there's a... To be here. Goes out. My... They re-attached it.
Well, so... I don't care so much.
Is that right?
You don't like paying attention.
Make sure that every question you have, make sure you... Because... I'm sorry, talking to you right now. Right, we're making your backside.
Yeah.
Good question. So, it's like, I don't know that.
We're just... Well, you have sometimes... Sometimes something lying... You know what I mean? You know what I mean?
Hey, that's...
You, you can place it each person.
We do have work rallies in the Sagoff Street up here, unless you wanna make copies right now, so...
I mean, I talked to...
So, where has it become, it's all that, I see that way. The first thing... Sagoff is right here. It's...
We gotta move that, so I gotta have five here to... One, two, three, four. Five, okay. Where is... I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Whole, and I'd like to, Vice President Spatafor?
Uh, yeah. Madam President, I would move the resolution ratifying the union contract for the capital city labor program and the non-supervisory.
We have a motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously, Vice President Spatafor?
Madam President, I move the resolution ratifying the union contract for the capital city labor program supervisory.
Um, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. At this time, we will adjourn the Committee of the Whole, and, um, in about three minutes, we will, um, call to order the council meeting. We are adjourned.